This podcast is powered by the MIT TV of Romeo, Michigan. If you're looking to start a podcast for your business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. Their in-studio podcast experience allows you to record perfect audio and capture amazing video. That's all right here at the MIT TV Podcast Studio in Romeo, Michigan. Contact them now via email for a free consultation and to schedule a studio visit at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. It's good to have you here today.
Thank you.
I've been talking all day. You know, each year, Brielle, we have a great deal of interest in the community when there's an election. And with the November 5th election coming up, we've got a lot of people that say, hey, are you gonna bring back that, get to know the candidates? So today, we have Brielle Chahocky.
Yes.
Oh, I said it right, yeah. Cool. And you're running for Board of Education.
Yes.
And a lot of people know you around here. And you've always been involved in the community, you've been involved with the schools. And now we see your black and white, black, red and white signs.
Yes.
And you're doing, you're doing really good.
Thank you.
Because you already are connected to the community. And now, you know, because you have an interest in the community, you're running for a position.
Yes.
And you're running for Board of Education.
Yep.
And, you know, a lot of people get involved as public servants because they see a need. And why did you decide to go for this position of Board of Education?
Um, because I have three kids and they're so little. And I just want to make sure that the stuff that I don't want in the schools is kept out. Um, because again, I have three young children that, you know, their minds are being shaped. And I just want to make sure that they stay pure and continue to just learn about the basics and not all the garbage that's trying to be put in there.
Right. Tell us a little bit about your family.
Um, I have a fifth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner. Um, two boys and a girl. Um, I have a husband of 11 years. Uh, we built our house in Bruce Township in 2020. Um, but I've lived here since 2000 in Washington Township. So, um, it's the five of us and yeah.
And so you, all three of your kids are in school now?
Yes.
What, what's the oldest grade?
Fifth.
Fifth grade?
Yep.
So you're starting to see, you know, your kids progress into the middle school and high school? And you're getting, you're getting involved in, in, while, while they're young?
Yes.
And early. So is that what motivates you?
Yes, big time, all three of them, big time. Cause my mom was like heavily involved with me growing up. And I, you know, I'm blessed to have a husband that can work and provide to where I can stay home and do everything.
Yeah.
For my children in school.
And he's really supportive.
So supportive.
He's your champion.
Oh, my gosh, like my MVP, my ride or die for sure.
Yeah, and that's important.
Yeah.
You know, you look at people that represent, in, in people that take these positions, you want them to be the people that represent you.
Yes.
And represent your kind of family, your kind of values.
Yep.
And, you know, people look for those kind of people to, to be running in these positions.
Right.
So, yeah, I know your passion. Because if there's one thing that everybody knows about you is your passion.
Yes, I'm very vocal about that, yes.
And you're heavily involved with the schools too.
Yes.
So what, what's been your involvement in the schools?
Um, I am a substitute teacher for the district. Um, I am a lunchroom, a lunchroom mom. I help in the library. I am on the PTO council for the district.
Wow.
Yes. Um, and I'm on several committees too for the district. So I'm all in.
Wow.
Everywhere.
Where, how do you find the time to do that, raise a young family?
I have such a supportive husband and I have such supportive parents as well. To where if I need to be somewhere, one of them is always helping me somewhere. So, I mean, I'm, I'm very blessed with having supportive family and friends.
Well, we film the, the meetings and so I watch them all.
Yes.
And I've watched you be, I, I've watched you progressively become more and more involved.
Yes.
At the board level, at the board meetings. And, you know, I see you up there in the podium and what was the point where you said, I'm gonna dedicate my time to get, to start getting interested in what the Board of Education does? Was there any pivotal time that said, that you said, I really need to get involved?
Um, I think it's about, it was, it was when there weren't things that were not being transparent. Um, I'm, I don't like being kept in the dark with my children. Um, so when there were certain things going on in one of my children's classrooms and I wasn't being told, that's kind of what did it for me, thinking, okay, there has to be some kind of better communication between school and home to where, you know, I can be involved and be, you know, and help the community be more transparent with what's going on as well.
And did you ask, approach the board at that time and ask them to be more transparent?
Yes.
And were they?
Um, yes and no. I mean, sometime, you know, some of them did and some of them didn't. And, you know, I was still kind of kept in the dark. Or, you know, things were shoved under the rug and I, I don't, I don't appreciate that when it comes to my children.
Right. I think that's when I saw you become more active.
Yep.
And more vocal.
Yes.
So with your experience and doing that, making those, those actions and saying, you know, I'm demanding more information, more transparency. How did you get through that? How did you get through, like, did you get the answers immediately? Did you have to do more work to get them to give you the answers that you needed?
I actually, the answer, they actually did help, um, after the first or second time of going up to the podium and, and bringing more people with me to voice their concerns. During, you know, one of the incidents, the board actually contacted, you know.
The other party?
The other party. Um, and they, they were able to help the situation of what we were asking. So it, obviously my voice was heard and so were the other parents, so.
Right.
Yep.
And then I think you saw more people, you were able to start to contact more people because after the meeting, you know, I know people congregated.
Yes.
After the meeting congregated out in the parking lot and you were, started to be able to communicate with other people.
Yes, and people like saw me get up there, so they weren't as scared to come forward as well because they knew I had their back and they knew other people had their back.
Right.
So I think that helped as well.
Yeah, yeah. There's a real need for communication.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, talking to a lot of people today, you know, we talk about the parks and the places that we all gather. You know, I mean, I just saw you guys at the homecoming parade.
Yes.
You know, your husband was on the sidelines, you were in the parade and everybody was talking. Everybody was like approaching you, asking you questions. It's a real community here. And the communication person to person is so much more important than what you, obviously everyone sees on social media.
Right.
Because those people aren't out there.
Right.
Those people are not connected to the community. They're not involved in the community. They're not coming with real issues and bringing solutions with them.
Right.
And I've noticed with you, when you have an issue, you bring a solution with you.
Right.
So it's difficult with a bunch of people complaining to make them happy. So, you know, we see a lot on social media now. And I know you're dealing with it, everybody is dealing with it, especially in a political year.
Right.
So is there anything that you see now, either in the room or mill or social media, that you want to debunk? That you wanted to tell, you know, your viewers about what the truth is? Or your version of it?
About anything?
Yeah, anything.
Um.
Let it out.
Ooh, um, I.
It's a big part of this game, you know?
Yeah. Um, so I, you know, the last couple of weeks, I have been called dangerous.
Whoa.
Yep, um, I've been.
You?
Yeah.
What are you, five one?
Five four.
Okay, I know you're tall on the radio.
Yes, I've been called, um, dangerous, I've been called, um, some pretty nasty names. Um, people are saying that I'm making fun of children, um, bullying children, bullying parents. Um, racist, homophobe, you name it.
Wow.
I have been named these things. Um, I love substitute teaching, okay? I love going in.
What do you love about it?
I love when I go in there and all these kids like high five me and they think that I'm like super cool because I don't, I don't come in dressed like an adult.
Yeah.
I come in with my vans or my red vans and I, you know, come in with my, you know, cool person, like swag, what they say. And they appreciate that I, I talk to them like, you know, human beings and not.
Right.
Higher power over them. And I like when they come up to me and they like, they hug me and they high five me and they're like, Brody and Beckett's mom, you know, like.
Yeah.
I love doing that and I love teaching them. So for people to call me like dangerous and that I'm making fun of kids, that is so far from the truth.
Yeah.
I mean, you could go into these schools and ask these children and they could never say I have ever said anything negative about these people.
I was seeing the kids around you.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be running for school board if I was out making fun of children, first of all.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, uh, the racist comments, I, I'm, I grew up surrounded by every race in the church, in schools, everything. And like, I buy my kids black Barbies, black dolls. I'm not, I'm not against other people.
Right.
Like at all, and.
That's a word that they use when they have nothing else, really.
It's, it's just, I'm so like.
Can't take it personal. You know, I know it's very difficult.
Right.
Been there, been there, done that, where you see people on social media who haven't, you don't even know them.
No.
Most of the time they're fake profiles.
The majority of them I've never spoken to.
Yeah, you don't see them at school, you don't see them in, you know, at any meetings.
Right.
You don't see them out at all.
Right.
They just pop up on the screen somewhere.
Yeah.
But it is difficult to hear that, listen to it and, you know, worry that people are gonna read that, that don't know you and they're gonna believe it.
Right, and that's, that's what I am worried about. I don't want people that don't know me and have never spoken to me to read that and think, oh, maybe she is like that.
Right.
I mean, I know I'm not like that.
That's all, that's all you gotta know.
Right.
And all, and all the people around you.
Right.
And, you know, your family, your friends, and especially your students.
Right.
You know, you're never gonna hear, you're never gonna even have one of your students see any of that crap.
Unless it's 15 years down the road, then people have to think like, hey.
Oh, it's gonna be long gone by then. But it is difficult and, you know, this is your first time running for a position.
Yes.
In the community and it's scary.
Yeah.
You know, and I always say, you know, don't worry, don't worry, don't stress, this will all pass.
Right.
Because these are the tools of the trade.
Right.
Of social media propaganda, bullying and all that. So you just gotta get past that and get on with what's really important, you know, which is the job that you're going after.
Right, my eyes are on the prize and I just have to ignore all the noise.
Right, exactly, exactly. So what do you see yourself doing differently than the board, members of the board is, are doing now?
Um, I really don't think some of these, not all of them, some of these board members are never in the schools. Okay, so they don't really know what's really going on in there. Um, so I want to be more involved into the schools as a board member. Like I would want to talk to teachers, I would want to talk to parents. You know, I'm not any better than you because I'm on a board. Like I want to make sure that their voices are heard, even if they can't go to a podium. Because I know how terrifying that is to go up there.
Right.
So I just, I just want to be an ear and a voice for them to say, okay, I'm actually in here, I am listening.
Right.
So.
Yeah, cause in, in politics, you always have these representatives that come in as public servants and they, they want to be the voice of the community and they don't know anything about the community. And then they go to Washington and they don't ever come back to the community.
Right.
You know, you're gonna be the true voice.
Right.
Of the children, of the students, of the community. Cause you're also involved in the community a lot too.
And I have small children, so.
Yeah, yeah. So is there anything as far as, you know, when you get into a board situation and you need to work with other people.
Right.
In decision-making, conflict resolution becomes very important. So how good are you at conflict resolution? Where do you see, how do you see yourself maneuvering, you know, across the table, talking to people that might have opposite opinions of yours, but you all need to vote?
Right.
How do you see yourself working with that?
Honestly, I just, like, at the end of the day, my vote is my vote and your vote is your vote. So I'm gonna listen to you and I'm gonna say what I need to say, not trying to persuade you, but I want to listen to you and you should listen to me. We're both adults, so once we vote, move on. Like there's no more, we don't have to argue about these things or keep bringing it up. But it's, it's basically, everybody just wants to be heard.
Right.
So just listening and, you know, even finding common ground as well. Like if there is a situation, okay, let's discuss it, see what the pros and cons or whatever. And it's just basically being open-minded of saying, okay, just because I have a strong opinion about this doesn't mean they're wrong.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's really just listening to them.
And I know you're a big proponent of critical thinking. I know it's kind of a trending word, trending phase of critical thinking. But when you look at our students, looking at either a teacher or a mentor. And seeing that they have critical thinking and that they're actually teaching that talent.
Right.
You know, how do you bring that into what you do, what you will do every day in the schools and what you will do on the board? Like, do you have the time to do the research and think on your own, you know, as far as what your opinion is going to be once you get to the board and vote?
Yes, because I mean, there's, there's some things that the board members do that I don't have knowledge of. And I would like to learn, you know, I'm 38 years old and I don't know certain things, but I'd like to learn more about it. So I just would, you know, need, you know, I, I, somebody can show me the tools of where I'm supposed to look for these things. And I have no problem with looking into things and, and learning more because, you know, you're never too old to learn to do things.
Right.
So.
And it's nice because, you know, a lot of, we see a lot of school boards now, especially.
Yeah.
In the media and they're a nightmare.
Yeah.
You know, there are a lot of older people that don't have kids in the schools, don't, aren't really in touch with the public anymore. It's been their position for years. It's a position of authority and they're, you know, they're the elite and they're all of us and, and it looks like through the years, our district has been able to get new blood.
Yes.
And this year, we have a lot of young people.
Yes.
Going out for these positions, so we're all thinking this is gonna be a good thing.
Yes.
And our district and our board, they have done a good job. I mean, we're just watching Monday night's meeting.
Yes.
You know, the reports were good.
Yep.
And so you have a good network of people. You know, you have a supervisor or a superintendent, um, who's done a very good job at trying to, I mean, has, and has gone through COVID.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, I, I, I felt so bad for them during that whole time.
Yeah.
You know, that chaotic time where you have to make decisions.
Yeah.
And, you know, since COVID, things have changed of what's important.
Yep.
You know, we watched ourselves not know what's going on.
Right.
Which brings fear. And fear is a scary thing when you're dealing with making decisions based on fear.
Right.
What have you learned, and I know you, you were active during that time. What have you learned about, you know, especially like just the mask theory?
Right.
You know, everything that we know now, if we knew then.
Right.
Probably there wouldn't have been so much hysteria.
A hundred percent.
But how do you see that, like, knowing that there's chances of this happening again? How would you handle it differently? Or would you handle it the same?
I was pretty vocal, I was pretty vocal during the pandemic. Um, I wouldn't do anything differently. I was not a mask wearer, my kids were not mask wearers. Um, we didn't get a vaccine, I didn't test, I did none of that. Um, so I wouldn't do anything differently. Now, I'm not saying I, I sent my kids with no masks, even though the school said to. I'm not, you know, a rule breaker.
Right.
Um, but everything outside of that, I would never go back to online learning. My, my oldest son, um, really did not do well during those two years. And, and it's still following him.
Yeah.
And, um.
Is he, because he's having to catch up?
Yeah, he, he is having to catch up with reading because the, you know, the kindergarten during the time that it shut down was so, um, it was so detrimental with like reading in kindergarten that that's where he missed. And then first grade was all online learning and it was, he learned nothing.
Wow.
So I would, I am not for online learning at all, I am for in-person a hundred percent. So I wouldn't do anything differently as far as the masks and all of that, but I wouldn't agree with the online learning again, ever.
And a lot of candidates also talked about, well, you know, the federal government dictates that this is what we do, this is what we do.
Right.
You know, and you think, okay, are we sheeple?
Right.
You know?
Like, I'm not listening.
Yeah.
To that part, like.
Yeah.
I'm my own person.
Yeah.
And my children are my, are, I'm gonna tell what my kids can do. Like the government's not gonna tell me that.
As a parent.
Right.
Your boss, right?
Yep.
And it's, it's difficult because, you know, the first time around, we didn't know what was the truth.
Right.
And there was so much piped in fear, piped in propaganda.
Right.
And the stress level was at the highest I've ever seen humans be at. Especially parents that had to take care of their kids.
Yes.
Where do you see the stress level in the kids? Uh, is it better now? Are they, you know, releasing some of that fear?
You know, I didn't notice it with my children because my husband and I weren't fearful. And my mom and dad were not fearful and my mother, and everybody around us were not fearful. So my kids didn't have that.
Yeah.
My kids were not stressed, like, you know, in that aspect. Um, school-wise, my oldest was, cause he was the only one that was in school.
Yeah.
He was because he was online learning and he didn't understand any of it. So I, I could see it with that, but as far as life, my kids were not stressed because we were living, we were living normally.
Right, well, we live in a new world.
Yeah.
You know, our world has changed.
Yes.
Especially in the last couple of years, I mean, we're talking, we've talked about this to everybody. We're talking about children's rights.
Right.
As far as being a Furbie or not. You know, identifying in a different way, that's your business.
Right.
But to support that at a child's level is contradictory to a parent's thinking.
Right.
And a passion to raise their children. You know, what's your opinion about that? You know, giving the, I mean, I, we don't have a big problem with it.
Right.
We don't have kitty litter in our, in our bathrooms. But we do have the question of whether we're gonna have transgender, transgender bathrooms.
Right.
You know, what's your thoughts on that?
Um, I, as far as the transgender thing, um, I think you need to be in the bathroom that your biological sex matches. I have a daughter and I don't need a male in her bathroom or her locker room. She deserves the dignity and the privacy to be able to change and use the restroom with no fear or embarrassment. And same with my boys, it's not, you know, it's not just a girl thing, it's my boys as well. You know, I don't know who's going in there. So, you know, I just want to protect all students from that. So I think it, it's however your biological sex matches is what you need to go in.
And is it a real issue or is it just politics? Because some of the, the candidates that have come in here and, and, you know, Ally was in here yesterday and she's in the schools too, you know, and she says, there's other bathrooms. There's, you know, you can have three bathrooms, you can have a girls and a guys and if they're uncomfortable. So is it really an issue that people have to start thinking about and deciding on? Or is this just politics? We, in our school district?
Um, I think it's a little bit of both. Um, I've seen it, but it's also, it's a political thing where it's also being pushed on children as well. So it is a little bit of both.
Do you find your kids questioning it, bringing up questions about that kind of thing?
I never, I, my kids have never asked me. Um, like we were in front of a, a child that was dressed like it and my kids have never asked and I don't say anything about it. So I mean, I don't.
Kids are pretty, you know, open-minded and really that a lot of things that us parents or, or, you know, people in the community worry about, they don't have a clue.
No.
You know, they're just living and learning and hopefully they're learning in our schools.
Right.
You know?
Yes.
We need to get back to that.
A hundred percent.
And I know you've got a, an opinion.
Yes.
On that, so let it, let it loose, let it loose.
I just think that we, I, how I grew up was just spelling, math, history, science, and that's it. None of this other in and out and political stuff that's being thrown in there. And I just feel like, you know, my son's not learning cursive. You know, throw that in there, take this other stuff out, um, you know.
Why is that?
I don't get it. I taught my kids how to write cursive because I feel like, you know, my grandma wrote things and I want them to be able to read it.
Yeah.
So I just.
You have to sign your name to a lot of checks and lots.
That too.
A lot of contracts.
That too.
Every business you're ever gonna be in.
Yeah, I just feel like my kids just need to learn the basics and, you know, everything else I can teach them. You know, if I, if I'm choosing to teach them certain things, let me do it, you know, and.
Right.
It's just, but it's also putting a lot of pressure on the teachers too. To teach all this other stuff.
Yeah.
That, you know, that they didn't sign up to teach.
Right.
So.
We have a really amazing school district, I think. Um, I've watched it for years and been part of the academies and, and assisting the different superintendents that have come and gone out of this community. I don't see a lot of what I hear is going on in other school districts. You know, but how do you keep the antennas up? You know, how do you, how do you keep up with the agendas that try to slip in?
There's a lot of.
Especially with the curriculum.
There's a lot of Facebook groups that I am a part of that, um, that I read and learn about or there's newspaper articles or, you know, that's really where I keep up with things. And then I have a lot of friends in different districts. You know, some of my friends are on boards in different districts. So by just talking to other people that are in, you know, other areas, then I know, okay, that's going on over there.
Yeah.
That's going on over there and we're kind of right in the middle where it's, so far it hasn't been bad like the other district.
Right.
So it's just talking and, and reading things.
Yeah, yeah. And I think they did a good job through this crisis, the COVID crisis.
Yeah.
And, and they fought a lot of demons themselves. And, you know, getting the kids back in, getting the masks off.
Yep.
Getting the online education when they had to have it.
Right.
You know, pushing for them to get back into classes and I think they did a great job.
Yes.
But we do have to be aware of where our world is going.
Right.
And hopefully it's not going in that direction, but.
Right.
How do you see yourself when you're at, at the board level? How do you see yourself being a watchdog? How do you keep your antennas up and grasp as much knowledge as you can as to what they are doing? You know, you, I know you get the reports and all that. Do you see yourself being able to be in the school, see, see what's happening and also keep up with what's coming into the district?
Yes, it's, it's literally being in the school. I, I want to be that person that's in the schools and not just sitting at a board.
Yeah.
And just looking at emails and deciding for myself. I want to actually be able to see what's going on and talk to people in the schools. I mean, it's that simple. I mean, it's that simple.
Right.
And talking to, to parents.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and you're connected to a lot of people.
Yes.
You're connected to a lot of groups.
Yes.
Um, you know, that socialize and are at all of the community events, this is a small community.
Correct.
Even though our district is huge.
Right.
Um, our community is small. And there's a lot of people that have a great deal of concern and interest about our schools and don't even have kids in the school.
Right.
So that helps too.
Yes.
You know, to be aware, to be alert. And, um, to be connected to people.
Yes.
So if you had the opportunity to talk to your voters and tell them why they should vote for you on November fifth, what would you tell them?
Um, it's, I'm just, I'm just a mom that is in the schools and I see everything that's going on. I am heavily involved in volunteering on these committees, on the council, I, you know, I have a lot of friends in the district that are involved as well. And I have very strong values, and I am not ashamed to say them, it's faith, family and freedom. I'm, I will never not say that.
I like that, yeah.
I know this is nonpartisan, but I am conservative Christian, and I'm not ashamed to say that as well. And I just wanna make sure that our children are, are sticking with age-appropriate curriculum and, um, traditional education and, and getting back to basics instead of all this other garbage. And it, it's pretty, it's pretty simple.
It is.
I want what I want for my kids for everybody's kids. You know, it's, it's that.
And how are you gonna get it? You're gonna be voted into a board position on the Board of Education?
Yes, November fifth.
November fifth. And, and how do you pronounce your name?
Brielle Chahaki.
So everybody look for that in their ballot, it's on the back.
Yes, it's on the back.
It's on the back.
People don't know.
But don't worry while you're filling out the ballot, so, and, um, we thank you for coming here and